Welcome, everyone, to the Wilmington School Committee meeting of February 28th, 2018. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Generally, we take student presentations first, but tonight you guys look like you want to watch the whole meeting, so we figured we'd keep you guys to the end. Does that sound all right? Why don't we start right off with you? We're very, very fortunate to have some of our Shawshien school students here today. Paul, do you want to?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Erin Burke from the Shawshien Lisa King. Unfortunately, was a little bit sick, so she couldn't be here, but Erin's going to introduce the grade three from the Shawshien.
Excellent. Well, good evening, and thank you so much for inviting us to be here tonight. We're very excited to represent Shawshien and all of the hard work that we've been doing, not only as a staff, but also as a group of students. So as I'm sure you're aware, over the past few years, we've been working on our PBIS initiative, and at the Shawshien, we are so fortunate to have a wonderful school-based PBIS team. Many of our representatives are here. Just give a little wave, PBIS members, and so we're happy to have them here. And in addition to all the hard work that we've been doing as a staff, we also have a little offshoot of a student leader group. So we call them our Shawshien Leaders, and we invited them to come tonight, and we'd like to thank them all for being here and their wonderful parents who have brought them and agreed to stay with them. We've prepared a brief presentation for you to share a little bit about what their group does to support our PBIS initiative and some of the exciting things that will be coming up at the Shawshien soon. All right? So I'm going to turn it over to them.
The Shawshien, okay. The Shawshien Leader, the Shawshien Leaders is a group of third-grade students, volunteers, who are leaders within their grade and school. A Shawshien Leader regularly helps model the expectations of being a responsible, respectful, and resilient Shawshien student. We also attend monthly meetings where we work on our leadership skills like communication, cooperation, and perseverance through lots of different activities. At one of our meetings, we created these posters to show some examples of our core values in action during the school day.
All right, so our first one is respect. My respect. Kids, can you stand up? Maybe come right next to the microphone.
Shawshien Leaders demonstrate our core value of respect each day in lots of ways. Leaders demonstrate respect by setting an example in our classrooms, lunchroom, and hallways when following school rules. Leaders have also shown respect by creating a welcome poster for our guest author, Marty Kelly.
Our next core value is responsibility. Stand up. Do you stand up?
Shawshien Leaders demonstrate responsibility at school in lots of ways. We show responsibility by helping with lunch duty for the younger grades. Our responsibility in the lunchroom is to model appropriate lunchtime behavior. We also help them open their lunches and dismiss them from their tables when they are ready. Another responsibility will be to collect, clean, record, and return our student recognition paws to the Shawshien staff.
Thank you. And our last core value, resilience.
Shawshien Leaders demonstrate resilience in our classroom at a recent leader meetings. Each meeting, leaders show teamwork and resilience by completing a variety of team-building challenges. Recently, we worked on an activity involving rubber bands and using them to stack cups in order to meet the challenge. We had to think critically, cooperate, and be resilient when our deeds didn't work.
And my golden award. And the last piece is something that we haven't quite rolled out yet to the staff, but we will be rolling it out in March to the staff and students, and that's our student recognition system. We're going to start recognizing all of the students at the Shawshien who demonstrate our core values of respect, responsibility, and resilience. And one thing that our students are going to be able to earn by classroom for showing these core values are these very cool golden awards. There's one for the cafeteria. We have a golden tray. We have one for the music room, golden mallet. We have one for the art room, a golden paintbrush. One for Mrs. Patterson's library, a golden book. And one for Ms. Hendy's gym class, a golden sneaker. And last but not least, for Mrs. Jewett, our co-facilitator of the Shawshien Leaders group, a golden skull. Looks scary, but it's very exciting. So thank you again for having us. Thank you to all of our Shawshien Leaders and families for joining us this evening, and we look forward to sharing more as we roll this program out.
Mrs. Burke, if you would, do we have any questions, comments from members of the committee?
I would just like to say, congrats to, I think her name was Megan, who memorized the whole thing. That's amazing. I couldn't do that, so.
They only got to them a few days ago, so that's a job.
Yes. Wow.
All right. I'd just like to say, on behalf of the committee, thank you. Oh, did you have something?
I was just going to say, it's so nice to have the focus on the children, and you didn't seem nervous at all, and we're so happy to have you and can't wait to see what you do next year. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments and just say, we are so proud, the entire community is proud of every one of you. Thank you for being here and representing the Shawshien and all Wilmington schools so well. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I would think, I don't think we're going to be real interesting after this. That, we just peaked, as far as entertainment value goes. Back to the agenda. Our first order of business is approval of minutes, February 12th, 2018, and February 13th, 2018, of the superintendent search candidate interview meetings. February 14th, 2018, regular session. Do I have a motion? So move by MJ and second by Manny. All those in favor? It's unanimous. We'll also seek approval of the Alliance Energy Exxon Mobile Educational Alliance Program grant to the Woburn Street Elementary School, the amount of $500, and we would certainly, we would accept our motion to approve with appreciation. Anybody willing to offer that motion? Jen, and a second by Manny. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Seeking approval of warrants, G418 and G419, R222, R223, L41, L42, and L43. Do I have a motion? Julie, and a second by MJ. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Warrants payroll, 214, 2018, and 228, 2018. Do I have a motion? From Jen, second, and Manny. All those in favor? That is six in favor with one abstention, that being Peggy Kane. Warrants CB09 and CB10. Do I have a motion? From Tom, second by Peggy. All those in favor? That is five with two abstentions. Myself and MJ, of course. Warrant sped 20, sped 21, sped 22, and sped 23. Do I have a motion from Manny? Second by Jen. All those in favor? Same vote, five in favor, two abstentions. All right. That brings us to our superintendent report. Paul?
Thank you. In light of the tragedy that occurred in Pacquiao, Florida, I just wanted to provide a brief update on some of the security measures we have in place in the Wilmington public schools. All of our school buildings are equipped with COD greets at the main entrance and a few other entrances at schools, and staff members have issued a badge which they can use to, with the COD greet, to gain access to a building. All the school buildings are also equipped with a door buzzer, intercom, or video system that are monitored and controlled by administrative assistants or security monitors. Non-staff members entering a building must be buzzed in after visual confirmation or video confirmation, and they are required to sign in at the main office, and they're issued a visitor badge for the duration of their stay. All doors are locked. We have video cameras at the high school. We have about 12 exterior cameras throughout the build, around the building, and approximately 48 cameras within the hallways and so forth within the high school. The middle school, we do have cameras in the hallways outside of the restrooms on each floor, and we have cameras around the four perimeter staircases. The middle school and high school, we also have a Raptor system. This is a system where someone wanted to visit those schools, show their ID, the ID gets put in this machine, and it automatically links up to various databases, and if there's no issue with the visitor, then they'll get a badge through that system. If there is an issue, administration and the police are immediately, are automatically notified. So there's some safety precautions. We also have two-way radios in our schools. We had a couple grants, I think I mentioned a couple years ago, we worked with the fire department and the police department, and the schools have two-way radios so they can communicate within the building, sometimes across schools, depending on the proximity, and at least one, if not more, radios in each school can directly link to the public safety dispatch for emergency purposes. There's some more phases of this program that we didn't get funding for yet, but some of it will be putting repeaters throughout the town. We put in a tenor on the water tower and so forth, so we're working with public safety in the schools, so more funding will help us get that, and the goal there is, when that's all done, there'll be communication throughout the entire town. We also, we work very, very closely with the police and fire, as you're aware. We are an Alice district. We have drills twice a year. We have been trained by the Wilmington Police Department. Lieutenant Scott Sensabaugh did a lot of training and work with us over the years. We have a, in addition, we have building-based safety committees. We also have a district safety committee, and that's chaired by Principal Jeff Straznick, and that's made up of police, fire, as well as staff from each of the schools, teachers, nurses, administrative assistants, administrators, and so forth, and that group meets about once a, once a month, and I'm going to ask Jeff to come on March 28th to present an update on the work that that group has done. One of the things that group has also done, we've reached out to the police and fire to walk the buildings in the next few weeks, once we get the schedule set, just to, again, check on safety precautions and so forth within the building, so they're working on that. But Jeff will come on March 28th. Finally, I'd just like to acknowledge that we, as a school district, are aware of a planned national walkout event on March 14th. As a district, we're working on a plan that will help us meet stakeholder needs and bring awareness to school security and a remembrance to the students in Pacquiao, Florida. I do have a couple meetings over the next few days lined up with various superintendents and high school principals from many different communities, one tomorrow, one Friday, and we have a leadership team meeting on Monday, so more information will follow, so we're trying to come up with a plan on that. So those are some of the safety precautions we have in place. In addition, we have a school resource officer at both the middle school and the high school, and as you're all aware, the police and fire are tremendous in this community. You know, one phone call and they're there in seconds. It's incredible, the relationship we have with, from the chief right on down, so.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Yes, Peggy.
I learned a lot just now. I just want to say, when you talk about this, what might be coming up and not coming up, can we make sure that, if you all agree with me, but I feel that the middle school and the high school should be two separate entities. In the middle school, those kids are only 11, 12. I'd like to keep them out of it if possible, if we are going to do, participate in something. So I'd like to just keep in mind about how little those middle school kids are.
I will keep you apprised of where we're going. I think the next few days into early next week, there'll be a lot more clarity on what a lot of districts are doing, and then, you know, we'll come up with a plan, and we'll make sure you're apprised of anything we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, from MJ.
I would just concur with Mrs. King's remark with regards to the middle school students, as well as you consider a plan for Wilmington in that.
Yep. Yeah, I'll be working again with Assistant Principal, Assistant Superintendent Gallagher and all the administrators throughout the district, so.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure that we have adequate supervision of students when they leave the building.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They're still kids.
If it's a safety and security of the staff and students, it's the most important thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
No matter what. Yep, I agree.
Yes, Jen?
I just want to say, thank you for that update, and I think that we all know that we're really at the forefront of a lot of the drills here, and we've done such a great job that many other districts follow, have followed us, and so, and are still doing that, kind of looking to us as the leader, so thank you for keeping us at the forefront of safety and for giving that update. Thank you.
And I think it's really the relationship we have with police and fire is just, it's such a great relationship, and they were instrumental in helping to train us, and right down to KIAZ. KIAZ was always a group that we struggled a little bit, but Lieutenant Sensabaugh trained them over the summer and so forth, so we've trained everyone, so.
Thank you.
That's good. All right. I have one other thing. Just a reminder, March 8th, Finance Committee budget presentation, Town Hall at 7 o'clock. Just as a reminder. Thank you.
We're also very happy to be receiving tonight an update from the Wilmington Unified School Day Special Olympics Games. Hello, Diana. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. So I was just going to give you a brief update on where we are preparing for the upcoming Wilmington School Day Games. We have 58 athletes registered and ready to participate on May 2nd. We have one unified partner officially registered online. I know there are some, some forms that came in recently, they just haven't been signed up yet, but once the day comes, we will have a unified partner for each athlete. So with 58 athletes, assuming that's where we are with that, that will give us 116 students. Burlington has not signed anyone up yet. I believe they're going to have about another 40 students like they did last year, so that'll be 158 total, which is slightly over what we had last year, which was a comfortable number. We have not yet figured out the out-of-district students inviting them. We're waiting to hear back from the Special Olympics, because if the out-of-district schools have their own school day games to participate in, then those students are ineligible to participate in our school day games as well. So they have received a list of all the, the schools where we send students. We're waiting to hear back as to which ones of those schools actually participate in other games, and once we have that information, we will then send out invitations to the students who do not have their own games, so that we can bring them in. It's a little bit more delayed than I would like. We're hoping, and I think we're on the right course, to get the six-week training program underway by March 12th, at least for the athletes and the partners who have already expressed an interest in participating, and hopefully we can get those, the out-of-district students who participate as well. Hopefully, we can get them doing something with the partners that they're going to be with on the day, just so they can get to know them. But unfortunately, I don't have any information beyond that for the out-of-district students. Fundraising has been a little bit slow. We currently have $355 that has come in. The donations go directly to the Special Olympics, so we don't see them here in the district, but I do get updates from our correspondent with the Special Olympics, letting me know when we get checks that come in. I have heard of a few businesses in town that are going to be purchasing ad space. We're going to be printing out a program on the day of the events. I'm picturing it'll have all the athletes and partners' names in it, as well as half-page and full-page ads, and so I'm hoping that we'll get a few more ads coming in for that. We do have a fundraiser coming up from March 5th to the 9th. We're going to be collecting clothing and shoes for Savers Fun Drive. Currently, we will be collecting those things at the high school, The West, and The Wildwood. We're hoping to push a couple more schools to, to be willing to collect those donations. We Are One Wilmington has already rented out space at Villanova Hall on Sunday, March 11th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in order to get community donations, and a member of their organization is going to be renting a U-Haul truck from the 11th until the 13th, which is our drop-off date at Savers. So we're hoping that we can, we can get a lot of clothing and shoe donations, because they will give us, I believe, it's about 20 cents per pound of clothing that gets donated. So, so we're going to see what we can do with that fundraiser and hopefully get a little more money in for the Special Olympics that way. And so that brings me to why, why I'm here. I'm asking if we can create a Facebook event page for the Second Annual School Day Games. We think that it would allow us to get a little bit more information out to the community regarding, like, the fundraising efforts that we're doing, to let the community know that they are allowed to come and support the athletes on the day of the event, and also to get out a little bit more information on the sponsors that we have. So if someone has given us some money, we can post their name or put their, the ad that's going to be in the program, we could put that on the, the event page. And there was also a thought of maybe even doing some, in the spotlight, things with, with athletes, if there was anyone who, obviously, would get permission from, from the student and their family, and just sort of give a little brief overview of the student and their involvement with the school day games, and, you know, how they, how they think they will compete in the games when they come, so.
All right.
So that's my report.
You, I'm sorry. Julie, go ahead.
I just had a question in the past. With last year, I know you utilized students from our other schools to be helpers. Do you anticipate doing that again?
For, for the volunteers who ran the stations, they were high schoolers. I believe they were mostly juniors and seniors. I think we're going to be extending that to sophomores, possibly freshmen as well, just so we can kind of train them for future years. We did have students from other schools who were the buddies or the partners. The partners, it was a little misunderstood. We're hoping that they will also be competing along with the athletes. That's the idea that the Special Olympics had when they, when they started the Unified Games, so that everyone, at least at the middle and high school level, they get qualifying times during the training program, and so then they are paired up with people who run or walk at about the same pace as them, so you don't feel like you're running a lot faster than the person next to you, and, you know, we're still trying to work out how that's going to work, because I know when I talked to the partners about that last year, they did not feel comfortable competing against the athletes, but that is the idea of the Unified Games, is that everyone is going to be competing. You know, you might have a heat where there are three partners running against each other, and everybody walks away with a medal, and then at the elementary level, they're all competing, or not, they're competing, but they receive a participation medal at the end, so they're not going for the gold, silver, bronze, like the middle and high school level. So, yeah, we definitely have the partners there. I know there's been question about having students come out just to support their peers, and I, I am fully for that. I know to get them transported there, they need to fill out a field trip permission slip form, so I'm, I'm not necessarily organizing anything specifically for that, but I guess it would be on a school basis, whether they want to allow classes to, to attend, and if that's the case, then we would, last year, we were looking into getting some buses that could possibly just shuttle kids around all day long, and if that, if that seems feasible and something that we could do, then I'm, I'm definitely all for it, because I would like to get as many students involved as possible and fill up those stands.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
MJ.
First, I want to thank you again for taking on such an enormous undertaking. I know there's a lot of criteria, and I know there's a lot of things that go into being a host Olympic venue, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate you reaching out to the out-of-district students as well. I know that's not easy, and it just adds another layer to an already very cramped schedule and timeline, but I just want to extend my thanks for your, your interest in your time in making this another successful event, and I will be looking through my closets for all my '80s shoes, because I know they're pretty heavy. So, good condition, but vintage, everyone loves vintage, but so I'll make sure to get all my heaviest clothes.
Right.
Well, you're welcome. That's exactly how I've gotten away for the past couple of years, yeah. But thank you again very much for your dedication and that of your team working to make this possible.
You're welcome.
Jen?
Quick question. The Savers fundraiser, you don't want people dropping off directly to Savers. It sounds like you want them dropping off to locations.
Yeah, it needs to go, we have a specific time that we have to drop everything off, and actually, I talked to someone from Savers last week, they said if anybody wanted, the reason we're only collecting clothing and shoes is because that's the biggest profit that you can get, and if you donate, like, a piece of furniture, you get, I think it's 10 or 20 cents for the furniture, so they were suggesting if people want to get rid of their furniture, to sell it on Craigslist, and, and whatever you get for it, donate it to the Special Olympics, because you'll get more for it that way.
I have a question. How can, how, do you just go on the Special Olympics website, and then does Wilmington come up as a place to donate? How do people do it? They want to send money towards this?
You, if you want to send money, you, you would send it to the Special Olympics.
They can do it online?
They have an online donation, but you can't specify where that donation goes. If you do send a donation to them, you want to specify that it's going to Wilmington SDG for School Day Games, and then they will earmark that specifically for, for our purposes.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. And you are seeking approval, by the way, real, real quickly, I attended last year, it was a fantastic event.
Right.
So it was, it was just a wonderful time. You're seeking approval to create a Facebook event page?
Yes.
You need our approval for that?
We just wanted to, I think, bring it to your attention. It's something that I think is a good idea, and it would be such that we would not allow comments, and it'll be a positive use of social media, which I think would be nice.
Sounds nice.
So I think it's a great idea to do that, just to, as Diana just mentioned, you can put people that donate, you can put them right on the, on the page, the company or whatever, and then the athletes. I think it's a great idea, but we just want to bring it to your attention.
Okay.
There will be no commenting allowed, but I think it's, it's a good idea.
And also, you obviously will advertise when people can drop off and where.
Yes.
Will there be a link on this school's site to this page as an upcoming event?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work that out.
Okay.
We just wanted to bring it to your attention and, you know, just make sure there wasn't any.
Opposition?
Yeah, some real opposition to it. I think if we control it, it's done right, I think it'll be very positive. So I think that's what we're.
I think it's a great idea.
All right. Stop right there. Stop.
I could tell they were talking to me. I think it's wonderful. That'll be great use of it. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, we're going to get an update from our, regarding our Wildcats' summer sports. Camps?
Yep. I'll take this. Tim is down, down the hall in the gym, the girls' basketball team's playing. We just wanted to get this to you, to, really, we'd like you to approve the summer camps again. We're a little bit earlier than normal, but the athletic department would like to get, there's an attached flyer in here, it's not final, but just to get it, information out so that it's back on people's minds. Typically, in April is when the flyers will go out, and by then, we'll have concrete information, exactly where we'll hold it. We'd like to come back.
We'd like to come back to the high school, we've got to verify that there's no work being done in the gym over the summer. And then depending on, right now, we're, I think, June 18th, which is a Monday. So hopefully, when we get a little bit further into the school, yeah, that'll still be the date. That's our goal. But we just want to get it approved and we can move forward with the summer camps as well.
Do you actually need a vote on this?
Yeah, if you could have a motion to approve.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved by Julie, and a second by Peggy. All those in favor? That is unanimous. These are always fantastic programs and always well-attended.
Thank you.
All right, we're now going to hear about our Wilmington High School Program of Studies. Welcome, Linda, Principal of the Wilmington High School. And I would take this up, this is the first one I've had, I think, to thank you for our Wilmington High School pens.
You're welcome.
Fantastic.
I have more. Thank you for having me. We do not have a lot of changes to the program this year because we've been working on this for several years. And although the changes we have are few, they are significant. The first change that we worked on was our student classroom internship program. We do have students that choose to be in a classroom with a teacher. And we do have a requirement for them to apply for this, but we never had any guidelines for the teacher and the student while they were doing the internship. So we did add the guidelines to that. And they are listed on the summary sheet. We also have added some courses. The Service Learning Capstone class is being offered through the business department. And it's the first of its kind at Wilmington High School. So we are looking at using academic knowledge and skills to address a genuine, or actually several genuine, community needs. The program will run for a semester. And students will do some volunteer work. They will have guest speakers come in to talk about volunteering. And they will also have a project to do, which will involve a need in the community. We also are offering an AP Computer Science Principles course. Again, this is new to Wilmington High School. We don't have any computer science classes at this time, so we are starting with this one. The teacher that's going to teach this has taught before our computer-based programming classes. So this is really just an extension of that. And it's really the study of the principles that actually are about computer technology. The other two courses that we're adding are really a pilot for next year. They're in place of our 11th and 12th grade physical education and health classes. These courses are for 11th and 12th graders, and they can choose either one. Whichever one they choose, we will try to put it in for next year. And then the following year, they will take the other course. So these are two courses that they will take, one as a junior and one as a senior. And they're both involve fitness as well as physical education. So there's a lot of components that are combined as opposed to having a separate physical education component and then a separate health component. So they're combining the physical education and health into one course. There's a lot of time that's gone into preparing for these courses. And I think that the teachers that are teaching are really excited about it. So we have had to delete some courses due to scheduling. We tried to schedule our AP Chemistry and AP Biology lab. It's just not possible to schedule every student that is in AP Chemistry and in AP Biology into these lab courses. So we're not going to offer them next year. We also do not have any Media Productions courses due to a lack of enrollment as well. The other updates are really just small description changes to our ELA courses just to reflect the reading materials that they're using next year in their courses. They just needed to update those. And that's really all we had for changes.
All right, questions coming?
I was just going to comment on the deletion of the labs. It's just kind of too bad. I understand why it's just too bad because we do pride ourselves on our AP offerings.
Well, we do have the AP course.
Yeah.
The lab was an extra course. It was a half-year course in addition to the AP Chem and the AP Bio. So we still offer AP Chem and AP Bio, we just don't offer the lab component, which is an extra, and we just couldn't schedule everyone in there.
Yeah, logistically challenging.
Was it because too many students were trying to get into those labs?
Pardon me?
Was it because too many students were trying to get into the lab class?
No, no, there was, there's a space. They just didn't fit into the schedules of those students.
Got it.
So a lot of students take courses that, like band, strings, chorus, language, that just don't have the room in their schedules to schedule that half-year course.
I'm sorry, I created an old mindset with biology. There is a lab because it's a whole different learning process with regards to seeing, I remember, you know, fetal, you know, the pigs and, you know, hands-on learning, which happens only in a large portion, which happens in the lab. And seeing those, it's more than just reading it, it's seeing those chemical reactions. I'm sure there's experiments that take place as a part of the other AP classrooms, but it's, I think where my concern is, and I understand, is the way, is how do you support that learning if they're not practicing the, you know what I mean, the experiments?
They do have the labs in the AP courses themselves.
Oh, okay.
They also do a lot of virtual labs. So they do have a lot of that component within the course itself.
Oh, okay.
This was for added time.
All right, well, then, thank you. I think that explains my concern then. It's just in addition to what already takes place.
Yes, it does already take place.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification.
Peggy.
I want to say, I want to thank you for the way you give your report every year. You make it so clear to us and so easy to go through it, and it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
We had talked before, was there going to be some change? Or is there some change in that the wait, those...
Interdiscipline and blah. Not yet, we haven't discussed a schedule, any kind of scheduling changes yet.
When I first read these new things, I said, I wished I was a math-science person because they sound exciting and they sound like the teachers are excited to do it.
Yeah, I think it'll be an awesome course, really.
Thank you.
And I would entertain a motion to accept the report on the Wilmington High School Program of Studies for the 2018-2019 school year. So moved by Peggy, seconded by MJ. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. All right, that leads us to our next order of business, which is our textbook inventory. I believe Sean's going to carry this one.
No.
No, my turn, if I do it.
Yeah, before we get started, I know that the state, and I'll be presenting on leading the nation, I think, in an upcoming school committee meeting. Massachusetts is, as we all know, number one in the country for education. And I think we've always been progressive and moving forward and always raising the bar. And that's what I think separates our state from a lot of other states. But just through a press release through the governor's office, we are once again increasing our graduation rates for the 11th year in a row as a state, which is tremendous. And at the same time, we're dropping our dropout rate. So we're, as a state average, we're under 2%, which is comparable when you look at other states of where Massachusetts is. And to kind of downscale that to a lot of the work that you saw today, you know. And obviously, the PBIS and the Kindness and the great school culture initiatives that we have. But having our students articulate and present, and we're also impressed with the poise and those opportunities that we're providing for our students here in Wilmington, working with the teachers, it all really ties into the great work that's going on. So I'd want to take a moment and thank our teachers and staff and administrators for all their hard work, and the parents and families. I mean, it was just kind of all ties in. So as part of leading the nation, it's, you know, and I'll provide more information down the road, it's really for us to embrace a lot of the great things that are going on not only in our district, but also the state of Massachusetts. So there'll be a week-long celebration of that. And we've been doing, I think we're ahead of the forefront here by allowing our students last year and this year to start presenting some of the great things that are going on in the district. I think it's awesome, so I wanted to say that. Also wanted to thank the principals and the curriculum leaders, kind of giving an overview of our textbooks and the resources that we have into place. And remember that, you know, building managers and principals work on a regular basis with the faculty and the staff. And as part of the budget process, they, you know, see areas of improvement or resources, and they present them, you know, to the superintendent and to us as we look at their budgets. And a lot of the elementary principals and our early childhood centers, you know, with a reading initiative, the Reader's Workshop, we're kind of going through a lot of that information. So it was really helpful for me as coming into last year and this year to look at those classroom libraries, to understand at the district level there was a need there to support the Reader's Workshop. So they have their inventory, and as part of that budget process, we allocated $12,000, and you all approved that for the elementary classroom libraries. And then here's just really kind of the overview of where we're at. And we understand there is a need at the middle school. I've been in a lot of the social studies meetings, you know, with the faculty. And so we're kind of in the process of, that's the next, I think, big initiative supporting the middle school social studies program, grade six to eight. And, you know, just to touch base, the standards for social studies have changed. So if we went out last year in kind of knee-jerk reaction and bought those resources, the standards have now changed, so we would be, that purchase would be obsolete. So what we're looking at and working with history teachers and the curriculum leaders is looking at the standards that will be being adopted this September. You know, there's a whole process that's been going on for a year. So we'll have the new middle school standards and the new history standards. And then I think it's good timing for us then to wrap ourselves around the standards and then look at our resources. And that's when you start to look at textbooks and, you know, those type of resources versus online resources like Discovery Ed and Pearson and some of those products. So I would imagine for us, as we move into next year, to start to look at those online resources along with, you know, some hard copy resources. Get input, you know, just follow the same process that we did with Envisions Math at the middle school, Investigation Science at the middle school, and then looking at a social studies program at the middle school. And I think at the upper levels, the high school, just credit the CTLs and, you know, Ms. Peters and all of their work, you know, for maintaining their textbook inventory and resources. And they've been making the shift towards online resources. For example, foreign language has really shifted from textbook more to online resources with supplements. So I think it's a good time for us in the sense of, as we're working with our Chromebook initiative, to start really investigating, you know, some online resources in a lot of these different areas. So that's my summary of kind of what was presented to everybody. And hopefully Peggy will say, "Great job, Sean, very informative." Just like she said to Ms. Peters. And it won't be any questions. So that's kind of the overall. But I just wanted to credit a lot of the work that kind of went into the inventory for everybody.
Thank you.
All right, questions?
Let other people go first, I have a bunch.
Okay, so I will just say that this was an interesting exercise. I'm sure that it was quite time-consuming. And I appreciate your efforts and the staff's efforts to do a tally. I think I commented to you two weeks ago that I was actually surprised that we didn't have something like this. I think at the teacher level, the classroom level, they did. Maybe at the building level, they did. But as a bigger picture, I would have thought that we did. And I don't say that as a criticism, it was just sort of an aha moment. Like, oh, okay, this is interesting to me. So I have lots of little questions that, as opposed to taking up time this evening, and they might be redundant, perhaps I could ask you separately and maybe share with the group in a way that's appropriate that if people had the same questions...
Yeah, however.
You know, I could go through building by building.
No, no.
Because I made lots of highlights. But one, I guess, one thing I will bring forward, because I know we've talked about social studies in the past, both at the middle school and the high school level, and particularly as we transition and add more grades using the Chromebooks. You did this great spreadsheet, breaking it down by grade, by class, by the resource, the textbook, and then the online resources. And I highlighted lots of none for online resources. And that bothered me a little bit because if we're going to move towards a Chromebook in the Google Classroom environment, yet there's not existing online resources. What do we do? Are they coming? Do we know that the online resources are coming? Are we crossing our fingers?
Well, I think when you're looking, so when we look at the Envisions Math and Investigations for Science, so you have a program. So the online resources are part of that program. So when you see the math, it's easy for teachers to say, oh, this is our online programming. I think we are utilizing, within every classroom, a lot of teachers utilizing a lot of online resources. But it's, I think, when we put it as a district, that we all sharing the same online resource, we're probably not. So we're looking at Discovery Ed, which is a great online resource, and also looking at the middle school piloting the Pearson Social Studies program. So I think for us, it's really, we're in a crossroads in the sense of, as we move forward and looking at purchases for curriculum, are we looking at, and Discovery Ed, which is an online resource where the teachers would utilize, similar to like a Pearson Investigations, which a lot of districts, it's a different type of online programming. It's a lot, you know, from the feedback that, in my experience with it, teachers really like it because they can take existing lesson plans that they've been utilizing and then utilize the online program, and it really just enhances the whole curriculum. The other piece that's nice with online resources, if the standards do change, it's constant, especially in history, where it can constantly, you know, update. So you're not, nothing becomes obsolete when you have the online resources. So for us, I think that when the teachers are filling out online resources, they were probably imagining, is it like a district-wide online resource? But we are utilizing online resources in the classroom on an individual level. Does that help answer that a little bit?
It does, thank you. It's just a little concerning when I go through and I highlight lots of nuns.
Peggy.
I had already thought that when I was going over this again tonight, that it might be easier to... that it might be easier to, like, put it in writing.
Sure. And then I can.
But I still have a couple that I have to talk about tonight. Sorry. Um, I think science was in the same position as social studies in the past couple of years. And I think I've, I've brought it up consistently. What do you, imagining these teachers in their classroom, and we've not provided them with textbooks, we've not provided them with online resources because they aren't there, and we haven't, what have we presented them with and what are they, how are they supposed to figure out what to do? But you don't have to answer that because you didn't have anything to do with it. I don't want you to get.
Well, I just, I, I mean, when, when, so I want to really support teachers. They're, our teachers are amazing. So they, they really are. So when we're looking at the resources that they have, um, that is available to them, they are continuing to utilize those lessons, those, um, you know, the plans and, and this, they're bringing in their own online up-to-date 21st century learning. The difference is, is when you adopt, uh, a program, like, you know, if we look at Envisions Math or you look at Investigations in Science, when you adopt a program as a district, then it just enhances a lot of what they're already doing. So even for our teachers that have been teaching social studies for 10, 15, 20 years, when we start looking at these online resources, you don't, we don't want our teachers to have to start from scratch.
Right.
So the idea of a Discovery Ed, this online resource, I could take all of my lessons that I've been doing for a long time, and then I can utilize the online resource, um, to really enhance what I'm already doing, to tie that into 21st century learning. The benefit of online resources for teachers is because there's a, we always want our teachers to relate whatever they're teaching in the classroom to the real world. So a lot of our teachers in, in struggle of how, how do I relate this to the real world? What the nice piece of an online resource is it's all there for them. So they can concentrate more on the teaching and the education piece and not spending time looking for resources to tie it in. And, um, so I think for us, it's kind of an exciting time as the Chromebook initiative is being, you know, rolled out in more grades. And we have an opportunity to, to really look at, uh, an online resource that's really going to benefit. So teachers are doing amazing work with limited resources. And I don't want people to understand, like, you know, oh, well, if they don't have resources, then what's going on in the classroom? The, the teachers are doing amazing work. And for us, it's our, I think our job is to give them the resources to, to kind of do the great, the great work that they're doing, just to take it to a whole nother level.
Right.
So they're not spending time looking for resources. The resource is there. They can spend more time on, you know, differentiated instruction.
Teaching style and stuff, yeah.
Exactly. Exactly.
That's really good. That's true.
It is true.
Yeah, that's really good. Um, one of the things that has happened is we've, i- i- it seems that we've accepted the math curriculum. However, I'm not sure that we as a school committee ever, and this would be more to its part, I guess, um, it's disposable. The program's disposable after this year. Is that right?
I think it's.
No.
No.
We're going to have to pay each year for them. The, the kids are writing in the, the booklets.
No, that's part. So they, they receive, so as part of the Pearson program, they have the workbooks, but every year they get new workbooks coming in.
And we're not paying for it?
Well, it's part of, uh, it's part of the original.
Contract.
Contract for four or six year.
Did we have four or six?
We have, for the middle school, we have four. And at the elementary school, I think it was, I think it was four. So those, those subscriptions will be up, not next year, I think the year after for the elementary. And for the middle school, it's, I think, three years from now.
Um, are we watching then how much, if we had a new set of the regular books, we'd, it would be compared to the disposables? Because it seems to me that's going to be a lot of money once it, once it kicks in.
The, the renewal piece?
Yeah, we'll have to look into that. You're right. I mean, when this, two or three years ago, we went this route. Um, we did, uh, the contract was for four years and included the consumables for that time period. But we knew that when that ran out, we'd have to, you know, we don't have to buy the program again. We have to get the consumables. So we'll, we'll monitor that. Yeah.
I think Peggy's point, though, and I, I had the same kind of question. It was one of my highlights, that, uh, when we had talked about the Envisions program specifically, I don't know that it was totally clear that the workbooks were consumables. So there'd be one workbook per year, per student. So that's all part of the same big price, if you will, for a set amount of time.
Correct.
And then after that subscription's up, then we've got to think about it again.
Correct.
Okay. I don't think we knew that.
No. I don't, I don't.
I think that's up by somebody.
But, but on the, on the flip side, um, and, and just from having some experience with online resources, what was, there was very limited choices, I think, six years ago. Today, if we're looking at a, a business standpoint, there's a lot of, uh, companies that are competing with one another for online resources. This Discovery Ed, and I'm not promoting either or, but, um, is coming up with a product very similar to what the needs are for school systems, but it's, um, at a, at a lower cost. So I think as we start to move forward and looking at online resources, we look at these different programs. We look at the different costs and you look at the different, you know, opportunities for, for six, you know, a three-year plan, a, you know, six-year plan furthermore. But I think the, I think you're going to start to see a lot more, uh, competition in affordable products for school systems, um, with the competition that's out there. So.
I, I just have one more thing. Um, when a new teacher comes into a depart, a department, in my school, we used to have, um, like a, like the library has all the things for s- spring, the programs that are coming and what you're supposed to do. We used to have a thing that we had put together, like, as a department. So I could hand another ninth-grade teacher this and say, "These are the main books we do. These are the main, you know, projects, et cetera." Do we have anything like that in our school?
Yeah, for, like, our mentoring program, when a new teacher comes into elementary or middle school.
Right. But they're not just handed frameworks?
No. No.
And said, this is.
They, I'll tell you, this, um, this district and the teachers, um, really collaborate with one another. So our new teachers coming into any, you know, from the elementary level, middle school, or high school, um, they're really taken in by the veteran teachers and they share the resources. So a, a new teacher's not left on their own to kind of figure it out or, "Here's your curriculum. Good luck to you." So there's a lot of support that goes into that.
But this, but the idea is would Manny get the same thing from me and MJ get the same from you? Is we, it was like a structured, you know, so that you know that at the very least, every child in the ninth grade was going to be reading this particular book. So you, you weren't told to do everything, but it gave you choices. And, but that, then you could know what people were doing in their classrooms. Because a lot of times, that doesn't always happen.
Right. No, it's, I, I think it's, it's a lot more collaborative than, like, in the past.
I might have you run by them, should we do something like that at some point? And have, um, you know, have something that's a product of the, of the whole group. Like, all the English teachers would get together and do this. Sometimes it really helps to have things, you know, um, I don't know what word I want to say for that one, but.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Like, yeah, that's just a suggestion. So.
Yes. Yeah.
So I'll leave these others to send to you.
All right. Looking forward to it.
Jen.
Um, I have a couple of little questions too that I won't ask right now, just about numbers. And, um, I think that this document's going to be really helpful. As you can see, I think it probably, and it probably brought a lot of things to everyone's attention that, as we were looking at it, some of the dates, 1996, 97, you're like, ooh, jeez, you know. So I think highlighting some of that's going to be important. Um, a couple of comments about people using a lot of online resources. So my only, and I, which we will continue to do, which is wonderful. But I think then you start to lose some of that, I think, the systematic, like what Peggy's saying, how do we know everyone? So I'm going to pull from here and you're going to pull from here. And all of a sudden, are the sixth graders really all getting that core instruction? So I think we do need to be careful and I think we're heading in the right direction of being more intentional about that.
Exactly. And you look at that research-based online resources. So when you, when you start looking at adopting different online resources, they're all tied into the, you know, the standards and it's all research-based. So you get away from teachers having to go look for things where, it, I've, I've been, I've been there as people have gone on to, to decide and to make that shift to online resources. And it's really important that everyone's on the same page in utilizing research-based resources that can really have a great impact in the classroom.
And the same kind of thing with the, they're purchasing many supplemental materials on their own. Again, so you're going to run into that, right? Where I'm going to do this. I like this story, so I'm going to do that story. And we run into grades reading the same story maybe three times. And we probably want to make sure that doesn't happen. So I think that this will help us make those sort of strategic decisions. My other, I could go, I have a couple of other things. But I guess my biggest question for you would be, what do you see as the strengths as you look through this? And what do you see as the gaps? Like, one strength where you were like, really feel good about this? And then one area that you were sort of like, ooh, interesting?
Um, I think, I agree. I think when you, when we look back at, I'll just, the, the whole, um, classroom, Reader's Workshop, the support, I think, uh, this obviously helped. I kind of knew where we were with that. Um, but I think that that, I think it's a strength that we're addressing that, you know, with the allocation of the $12,000 to that, those classrooms. I think that's going to be really beneficial for teachers. I think there is, um, the strength of, um, I see a, a lot of great teaching. And I have seen, if we start to look at the Envisions Math and, and some consistency throughout the district on math and the math program, I think that that's a strength in the sense of teachers are really utilizing that. And they had to adjust a lot to that. So that's kind of a successful model of shifting to an online, uh, program, uh, which then we, we moved up to the middle school and then we're looking at, um, you know, with the investigations. Um, so I think that that's also really a, a strength of ours. I think there are some gaps, um, as you said, um, with, I think, consistency in the resources and having, I think, all of us and, and kind of surely talking through it, uh, as a district, not necessarily school committee, but as a district with the principals, um, really working, for example, when we look at the, the book Wonder, where Wonder's utilized, uh, kind of as a read-aloud or a lesson book at the elementary level. But then when we go to the middle school, it's then read in a different way, uh, at the middle school level. But there is some of that overlap, um, that, you know, and that's when you start talking vertical alignment. So I think that vertical and the horizontal alignment with standards and resources is something that you continue to address, um, you know, from grade to grade, school to school. And then, you know, the vertical aspect. So I think we still have work to do on that. I think for us as a district and I think the school committee and the town has been extremely supportive of resources. And when, when we pilot, uh, a program and, and we have teachers that are on board and it's presented to school committee, I think strength of ours is, you know, we have 100% support. But I think as we move from the Chromebook initiative and textbook, um, there's going to be growing pains there, um, you know, as that continues. And that's kind of like a natural, natural aspect of that. Um, in, in understanding this, uh, for teachers, it's frustrating. If you are a teacher and you have to look for resources to tie to 21st century. So I think for us, if we can provide that research-based online resources that we're all sharing together and, and we're utilizing, then it, the teachers aren't having to look for. They can focus on working with the students in the classroom. So, um, I think, a- as we all said, I think this is a, a good start. Um, you know, collectively bringing everything together, um, and then continue to work with our administration. So.
Sorry. This isn't about the textbooks.
All right.
But you brought up something to my mind.
Okay.
Um, could we be careful going into next year, because this has not happened? We have that, the CTLs, um, program, so to speak, or we have them in the high school. And they're supposed to be in the middle school also. And it is absolutely not working. And we know it's because of the, um, classes don't correspond and they don't have the same time to be able to go there. But our CTLs in the high school just do not get down. And I don't, don't blame them at all. It's the way things have, you know, evolved here. But I think that, um, I don't know why, I'm not sure they do it or not, but the way they're scheduled, if this, if the high school CTLs had the last two periods off, then they could go because they don't have to rush back to a class. I think maybe we haven't been creative enough on how to handle them, their schedules, so that they're able to get down there. But there is no connection, if, if, you know, you really want to look into it, there is no connection between the CTLs at the high school and the middle school because they just can't get there. So I really, while we're getting ready to start the new year, you know, to plan things and perhaps there's some way to look at it so that we can make a connection for them. And I think you'd find that that would solve a bunch of problems for them.
Thank you.
Yeah. And please don't think I'm blaming anybody. I'm not. It's the way the system has been going. But why do we keep doing it? You know, I think it's a good chance when we're opening this up to all this discussion and we have a new superintendent coming. And yes, he's coming. Everybody asked me, "Is he coming?" I don't know. Um, but I think it's, it would be a good time to get this out on the table, so to speak.
Peggy's just helped segue us into our next agenda item.
Good. Okay.
Superintendent search update.
Thank you.
At our last, uh, public meeting, we made an appointment, uh, pending successful negotiations of Dr. Glenn Brand. Um, we formed a subcommittee to negotiate, that being myself, Peggy Kane, and Jen Bryson. We have been in touch with Dr. Brand. We have, um, come to what we think are, um, agreeable terms for each of us. We are going to, uh, bring, uh, our attorney has reviewed the contract and we're going to bring it before the school committee for, uh, possible ratification, hopefully in our next meeting, unless we decide to schedule something before then. But, uh, he is very, uh, very eager, uh, to get started in, in the town of Wilmington. He's looking forward to it. So I think we've, uh, we've got, uh, great news coming up. MJ?
Are we anticipating an executive session so that we can review what's being?
That we would ratify an exec, well, we would review an executive session, then ratify an open session.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any questions? Comments? All right. Seeing none. We will go to public comments. Seeing none. We'll move on to, uh, subcommittee reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Yes, MJ?
I've got two, two, uh, one of which is the, um, the WEF, the Wilmington Education Foundation. Um, as you know, that they support and fund a grant, the Joanne Benton Education Explorer Grants. Um, they're awarding three grants, of which will come up before the school committee for approval at our next meeting. Uh, the first one, um, uh, has been awarded to Megan Burns at the high school, Spanish. She'll be exploring Spain and attend a conference, um, while in Spain. Uh, the next award, uh, awardee, um, is Kristen Smith of the Wilmington Middle School, G seven ELA. She'll be going to London to explore Charles Dickens and the Christmas Carol. And the next recipient is, um, Katiaan Jackson, also at the Wilmington Middle School. She's in eighth grade, social studies. Um, she will, has been awarded a grant for a trip to DC to, um, study, uh, this US civics. So, uh, I congratulate all the recipients of that grant. And I thank WEF for, um, uh, creating it and, uh, continuing with, um, such a wonderful, uh, grant.
If I may, that, that information came late, so we didn't get on this agenda. So the next agenda, we'll put it on, uh, for the school committee to approve it.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. The, the next item, um, that I would like to bring before the board is that, as you may know, and as you may be, uh, have read on the MAS, M A S E list server, um, Governor Baker has proposed a supplemental, um, budget, of which did not include adequate funding for a circuit breaker funding, which helps us defer costs for out-of-district placements. I have composed a letter I was hoping to bring, uh, that I was, I'm going to read, that I'm hoping that I would get the board support to. that I'm hoping that I would get the board support tonight to, to be from the, the board itself as opposed to just myself. And I'd like to read it to you to see what your thoughts are and to see if the board would vote to send this as, as a group. Otherwise, I'll be happy to do it individually, just as a, as a member. It will be, take a little tweaking at the introduction between the representatives, but it, this is how it reads. "I want to express, dear Senator Tar, I want to express my thanks and commend you for speaking out on the Senate floor on behalf of adequate funding for the special education Circuit Breaker Fund. It is imperative to the vitality of districts to ensure Circuit Breaker funding is included in the supplementary budget being proposed. Any reduction in Circuit Breaker funding would negatively impact a district's ability to charge special education, excuse me, tuitions against these funds, resulting in a larger impact to the utilization of local appropriation funds. With schools working furiously to increase and create new initiatives to support social and emotional health, anti-bullying, and safe schools, the lack of such funding will stunt these very important and much-needed programs. It is, it also puts unfair and unnecessary financial stresses on districts. Between continuing technology upgrades, contract negotiations, appropriate staff, staffing within classrooms, and enhancing security measures to keep our staff and students safe, the lack of appropriate Circuit Breaker funding will put many of these needs at jeopardy and risk not providing effectively for those students, our, our most vulnerable population." I don't know if I have to edit that piece. "I respectfully request you to continue to advocate on behalf of our public schools for funding of not only the Circuit Breaker line item within the state supplementary budget, but adequate and appropriate funding in the FY19 state budget." And then it says, "Warm regards, MJ Burns."
Questions, comments from the membership? Seeing none. MJ, are you seeking, you, are you?
Seeking if the board's intent, if they feel they, it's best suited collectively, basically. It's just bringing a voice to the table along with other school districts with regards to advocating for appropriate funding, for Circuit Breaker funding, especially at this juncture, that it's right now before this, on the state floor, in the legislature, in the legislative floor.
So MJ, are you making a motion?
Oh.
That the, the school committee send this as a, as a committee?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second? Second, any discussion? Peggy?
I think that's one of your best letters. It was right to the point, and it's brief and to the point, and it makes your point. But in the future though, I'm, I am a, an auditory, not an auditory, a visual learner. And if I had it ahead of time, that would have been easier to decide. But, but you are, you are our liaison to that, and this is a good, it's a good letter.
So I'm going to apologize for that, that I've been.
No, I'm inclined to.
No, 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 and I don't take it that way, but, and thank you for your kind words. I've been under the gun with a lot of balls up in the air, and this has been three weeks in the, in composing because I haven't been able, and Mr. Joe has been so graciously to reread it and edit it out to, to refine it. And so that's, that's, certainly that's, I mean, I apologize for not sharing it with the board prior.
I appreciate that you did that. Yeah, I think that was good. I definitely will support it.
Thank you.
And I'm sensitive to your, your comments as well, because I tend to like to see things in print. Quite frankly, I did see it this afternoon. I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but.
I'm just going to say, I also like to see things ahead of time. So I feel a little bit put on the spot. Again, I, I was listening intently and appreciate the intentions of the letter, so I am inclined to support it. But again, I'd like a heads up.
Agree, I, I agree. I just like to reread it, just to, if we're going to sign it, or if we're going to put all our names on it.
Right, our names are going on it.
Here's, here's what I would, I would offer too. I would respectfully say that if you, if you are not completely comfortable, don't feel compelled to vote for this. It would be certainly appropriate for MJ to send it as our, as a, as an individual school committee member, especially since she is our legislative delegate. However, the motion is on the floor with a second. All those in favor of putting the committee's signature at the bottom? And it is unanimous. So I think this is, you know, this was a, a good exercise, and then I think, and I certainly agree. Peggy and Julie and Jen, I like to see, I certainly do, I like to see it. If I didn't, I don't know that I'd be able to vote tonight.
I'd be happy to send, I'd be happy to send it out first thing tomorrow. Do you, would you, would each individual, would each member like to sign the letter individually? Because I can revam, I typically can revamp it on behalf of the school committee, the Wilmington School Committee.
And leave it at the Roman House.
And then I sign it, and I sign it as just the legislative rep of the board. But I, I'll do whatever is the will of the board. I have no reservations.
Put our names on it, I think we don't need to sign it. Just put our names on it with the school committee, it should be fine.
Just be consistent with what we've done in the past. I know it's been a while since we've done a letter from us as a group, particularly on a, on a national topic. But let's be consistent with what we've done in the past. And quite frankly, I don't remember, it's been a while.
I just, just so that I, I know, prior to sending out, what would, would, would that board feel comfortable with me changing the first part? I'd be happy to send it out and wait, wait until the next meeting on behalf of the Wilmington School Committee, and then just sign it with my name, you know, legislative representative for the board, that title, how I've done it in the past. I just, I'll take it, I mean, I just want to ensure that it goes out with everybody's, you know, it's agreeable to everybody.
Yeah, I think the, I think the vote has, was unanimous to send it out from the school committee. So I think we're, I think we're good there.
Okay.
But I think, you know, members would like to see a copy, so.
Oh, no, that's, that's nowhere, I just didn't know.
She must have noticed, you're going to put all our names on it, however, just to.
On behalf of the board.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate to put everyone's name, Wilmington School Committee, that lists the names.
It, it looks like there's more, since there's so many of us. He'd say, oh, there's eight more, seven more we can do, yeah.
No worries, be happy to do so. Can I, Paul, can I ask you, once I edit the letter to reflect the signatures, what would you, how would, how would I expedite it? Would I just leave it at the Roman House for signatures and then have it sent out?
Yeah, if you do it, we can put it on the school committee.
We don't, we don't need to send it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, we just list our names if you want, just.
Okay, I'd be happy to.
And we can print it on the school committee letterhead, if that's okay with you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything further, MJ?
No, thank you, no.
Any other subcommittee reports? Seeing none, correspondence, anything in correspondence? And future meeting dates and agenda items. We'll next be meeting on an open session, March 14th, and followed by March 28th. That concludes our scheduled business. I would entertain one final motion. Julie? All right, do I have a second for Tom? All those in favor? Thank you, everyone, for attending.